Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I'll call to order the April 12, 2022 meeting of the Celine County Commission. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Here.
Mr. Wees?
Here.
Mr. White?
All right, if we'd all stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now time for our citizens' input where citizens may speak on county government business, usually limited to three minutes. Anyone who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go into the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of contracts and agreements, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll as presented, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Any commissioners want to add, delete, amend?
I would like to have some, a little bit of clarification if I could, please, on a couple of items. I think it'll be pretty simple. The Celine County Clean Water Grant Programs that are going out to what, five or six different grants? That is all ARPA money. Is that correct?
Good morning, County Minister Phil Smith Haynes. Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. Those are all the ARPA programs. Those were awarded to those respective districts back in December, and we're finally working through the paperwork for signature.
And total-wise, do you have a rough estimate or do you know the number of what they all total?
It was $517,026, I believe. Five, so, a little over $517,000.
Okay, very good. And then I have, Phil, could you brief me real quickly on the Salina Area Technical College, this workforce development program agreement?
Yeah, that's the one for the truck driving program that you also approved. So these are all things that you have previously seen and approved, the concept, and now we're just coming back with the paperwork.
But could, could you elaborate on that just a little bit? I mean, it's simply the truck driving school.
Yes.
And how long, how long of a program would that be? And when do they anticipate?
Now you're taxing my memory, Commissioner. I, I'd have to go back and look what their specific program proposal was, but it's to train additional truck drivers in the community to acquire CDL licenses. That was one of three workforce programs that you approved with local universities, yeah.
As far as implementation, would that start with their, their?
Yeah, so all of the, yeah, all the programs. I believe that one might start this summer, if I'm not correct, but it's either the summer semester or the fall semester.
And not only for myself, but for the public, this would pay for all of their schooling for that program, is that correct? Or at least in terms of the?
I believe on this one, the folks had a small amount that they would have to pay in addition. This was mainly for equipment for the school, to make sure that they had adequate equipment, and some books and resources. The Kansas Wesleyan one would completely cover costs for that program, but I, I believe on Salina Tech, there was a small amount that the participant had to pay.
But the students would have their tuition paid? Am I correct with that, or?
Yeah, yes, the tuition, but I think there was something that they had to contribute as well.
And is it limited only to Celine County, or I don't remember that part of it?
You know, we did not specify that people had to be a Celine County resident to participate. Obviously, what we're hoping is that they will live here during their schooling and that they would join the trucking industry here locally. That's the purpose, but we, you know, if somebody wants to come down from Bennington and take classes, yeah.
There you go, all you prospective truck drivers, free schooling and opportunity to get into that field of trucking. So come on, enroll at Salina O-Tech, Salina Technical College. Thank you for the clarifications. With that, I would, Mr. Chairman, I approve, move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. We now move into action items. Item number one.
RFA 137-22, Resolution 22-2362, Reappointment to Planning Commission with Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. This is a, an RFA for a reappointment of both Kai Woodrich and Leslie Burnt to three-year terms with the planning board. The, back on March 7, there was a discussion at the public hearing, and they both expressed their, you know, hope for, for reappointment. They desire to serve another three-year term each. So with that, staff is recommending approval. As far as budgetary impact, since this is a volunteer board, there is no budget impact for the county. So with that, it's just, options are to either reappoint the Kai Woodrich and Leslie Burnt, or direct staff to find other alternatives for those positions.
All right. Questions or comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 22-2362 as presented by staff.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 137-22, Resolution 22-2362, Reappointment of Planning Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Tim. Item number two.
RFA 138-22, Safer and Healthier Grant Program with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So we were just talking during the consent calendar about American Rescue Plan Act funding and some of the programs that the commission has approved to spend funds, the 10.5 million that we received from the federal government. And so this is another such request. So this is a new program. What we are asking for is a quarter of a million dollars from our public safety set aside in the American Rescue Plan Act to do a grant program, which we're titling the Safer, excuse me, Safer and Healthier Celine County Grant Program, that would provide grant awards of up to $100,000 per program for agencies that propose projects addressing public safety, mental health, and/or criminal justice needs in the community. These grants could be used for planning, development, or implementation of projects, and you have an attachment that outlines some of the example projects that could be submitted under such a program. If this program is approved by your commission today, we would hope to get it sort of out on the streets by the first week of May, to have some time for applicants to ask any questions that we're not able to foresee in the initial materials, and then try and get applications back the beginning of June, and then turn those around through a committee process, hoping to appoint a review committee as we did with the clean water grants, and get those on your commission's agenda hopefully for June 21. Hoping for about a two-month turnaround on the grant agreements. It took us longer than we anticipated with the clean water grants, but we're hoping we've got some, some lessons learned so that folks can complete their projects by August of 2024, so that if any funds are unexpended, we can go ahead and reallocate those before the time lapses on the ARPA funding. So that's the basic overview, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Specifically, Phil, is this aimed at any one department?
No, it could be county departments that apply, but we're also thinking a number of nonprofit agencies in the community would also have interest. There are folks who work, for example, this is just one example, in the, in the field of substance abuse, where they directly deal with folks involved in the criminal justice system and those needs. And so if they had some specific project that they wanted to tackle over the next two years, that might be appropriate for this.
So wide open go for all of the agencies throughout the community?
Yes, absolutely.
Might, yeah, okay, thank you.
Does this have to be a new program, or can it augment a program that's already in place?
That's a great question, thank you, Mr. Chair. It could augment a program that's already in place if, for example, they were, there was a program and they could only take, you know, 10 people, and they wanted to increase that to 20 people. That's certainly a possibility, viable possibility. The only stipulation, of course, is that the funding is one-time and, and time-limited, so they would only be able to, to do that for a couple of years, and then have to have a sustainability plan for continuing the program beyond that.
I'd say one more thing, and that is to remind the, the public that this is not Celine County taxpayer money. This is through the American Rescue Plan Act, correct?
Well, yes, it's US taxpayer money ultimately, but yes, it's, it's not, it's not your local property tax bill. This is federal grant money. Yes, correct.
Is the June 6 deadline for the apps becoming the county, is that set in stone?
It's not set in stone. That's what we're striving for right now. We, we would, if the commission approves this, we'll go forward and talk with our consultants about viable timeframes. We think that is, is doable based on our experience with the clean water grants, but it can be adjusted if we need to.
Government at its finest.
Yeah, again, we just want to get these out and get them awarded as soon as possible so that folks have the maximum amount of time to spend the money before we have to call it back in 2024.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the proposed grant program as outlined and authorize the county administrator to appoint a review committee.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 138-22, Safer and Healthier Grant Program. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Turn the page. Item number three.
RFA 139-22, Agreement for Substance Use Services with St. Francis Ministries with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Annie.
Good morning, commissioners. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
This is an RFA to increase services, contractual services within our agency. We're having a little bit of issue with some of the services remaining remote, and so we're able to, with this contract, bring in services into, into our facility, which is a not even better than I thought. I just wanted clients to be able to access live groups and individual therapy instead of staying remote. It has not been impactful or effective as well as we would like to be for our clients. The bonus of having it inside our building is that the clients are there regularly, and we see a real increase when we provide services in-house and outside of, out of house with participation. So it'll increase participation is what the trends have showed us, and it'll be live, which is critical. It's just not working for our client population. So the grant is with St. Francis Ministries, and I applaud them for willing to do this and to actually come into our offices outstanding. It would provide assessment, which are going to be $200 per evaluation, individual counseling for $43.75 per 15-minute unit, and group counseling at $25 per 15-minute unit. All of those costs are traditional. Nothing is exceeding what we pay to many other facilities when we go out of town or in town. Those are just traditional kind of costs, so I approve those at that point. This is not going to impact the county budget. It really won't impact directly outside of our grant budgets. We already have the dollars outlined currently for these services. We may need to seek more because we are getting flat funding from Department of Corrections, but for right now and moving forward, we do have those, some county dollars and city dollars from the special alcohol tax fund that we can utilize for this. So, being that said, it doesn't impact the county budget. It'll be traditional dollars that are already within grants that we've secured, and I would ask that you approve this contract. The, I apologize, I looked at it today, and it does not have commission chair's name on it, has my name on it. So if you would rather us get that changed, I totally understand, and we can take it back should it be approved and bring it back.
I don't know if the logistics of that, if that's an issue or not, but I guess I'll refer to the county administrator.
I believe as long as the commission approves it, you can delegate signature authority to the director. That's fine.
Okay, there you go, Annie.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, let's see what happens.
I know. Well, I meant, thank you very much to Phil. The gem speaks again, so I'm happy.
Quick question. Is that in, in to your services being provided here, most of these people that's coming here have already been through the process of being evaluated in jail?
No, no. Not typically. I mean, what happens is if someone's going to remain in jail long-term with a projected release date, you can go in and get a mental health evaluation with mental health dollars that you all provided to the jail, but providers are not going into the jail, so they remain typically. I should say that. There may be some exceptions, but overall, they've kind of stopped that process. It used to happen back in the 90s. It doesn't happen much now. I say that, and I'm thinking, how old am I? But, but what we do is as soon as, we're, we see them in the jail, and as soon as their reentry plan out to the community is set, we know what we need to do, and we go ahead and get those things set up. So a lot of clients do not receive that in jail.
And, and one other question is that in the, a $25 charge will be applied to any one that is canceled. So if they don't show up, and I think that, are you still having an issue with your clients not showing up quite often?
Absolutely. I mean, no, not quite often. Absolutely. If you look at the Upriss data, the fact that we have that push notification has increased our no-shows and failures to court and our office. I mean, we're down to, we're having success within the 70% to 80% range, which is unheard of, and some in the 90% range for the clients on pretrial. So we're confident that not only the Upriss system, but having in our office will increase those participations. But should they not participate, there will be a $25 charge, which I, you know, I think, well, Community Corrections doesn't charge $25 every time someone doesn't show, but I do understand practitioners, because they can put in other people if they, if they're going to participate.
I was just looking to kind of guesstimate a cost to your department for the no-shows that, that's really hard to see, what, what if?
Right. Well, what we would do is they would be allowed a couple of no-shows, and should they continue down that path, we would look for other resources for them. Probably if someone's not coming in, they probably need to go to an inpatient facility.
Mr. Chairman, over here?
Oh, yes.
We had a hand raised in the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, for a public comment.
All right, are we, any other commissioners? All right, we'll go to our public, anyone in the public who wishes to speak?
Hi, I cannot hear Rogers microphone.
One thing, would you please state your name?
I'm sorry, Linda Lackleider. I couldn't hear Rogers microphone when he was talking a while ago.
All right. Rogers, is your mic hot?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I just couldn't hear at all. I could hear the lady.
Apologize for that.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You want to just give a quick synopsis of what?
Can you hear me now? She's gone.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Agreement for Substance Use Services with St. Francis Ministries as presented.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 139-22, Agreement for Substance Use Services with St. Francis Ministries. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Don't sneak away. Informational items.
No, I'm going to go back here, but I don't think I'm next.
Community Corrections Update with Annie Grievous, Director.
Where'd you go, Annie?
Right here. I'm sorry. I thought, I didn't know I was directly next. I thought Michelle was going. I was going to let Michelle go in front of me because that's the kind of gal I am, but I guess I'll go next. Sorry. I apologize.
You'd think she was a short timer or something.
I know.
Right. Well, yes. Not because of that, though. Okay, so this is the Community Corrections Departmental Update. The interval is from September 21 to March of 22. I just wanted to go over some current things. New fiscal begins July for us, so KDOC grants, federal grants, those kind of things will be beginning, and funds, hopefully, should be to us by the end of June, if not prior. So everything is due to KDOC May 1. We're very close to being ready to submit early. We will appear in front of the board, advisory board members, and then in front of Ottawa County and Celine County for final approval, and then those will be submitted. The Celine County, we'll see it after the due date, but we've already got, I believe we got an extension from DOC. I'm not too worried. We've had extensions in the past, and that was just because of calendar issues, not a big deal, but we'll appear and then we'll get that sent off to DOC. They're aware of the delays. We know that KDOC is doing flat funding. We know that that is going to impact us this year. Flat funding catches up with you after so long. You can only do that for so long. We have some resources in our unexpended funds that we can tap into and always do, but we'll also be looking probably for additional resources and grants and other things, and maybe this little grant right here to kind of supplement some services. I talked about the services. We are good this year, but going into partial next year, it might not hurt to have a little bit of more substance and mental health service dollars. As we all know, the population of that, of that target group is increasing in the jail and our community, and we're certainly seeing it no different than every last of the eight years. Drug court and pretrial picked up a joint staff person for Ottawa County and Celine County. Thank you to Celine County and Ottawa County Commissioners that approved those dollars. Dave Irving took the position. He had been with us eight years as an adult ISO and went into the pretrial with no problems whatsoever. He's a hard worker, very dedicated to the agency, drives from McPherson every day, and I don't care what kind of snowstorm, I've never seen him miss a day from a snowstorm. So I should say that he's very busy in Celine County, doing a lot of the follow-up work, first appearances, and those kind of things. He's building capacity and relationships and policy and procedure in Ottawa County. We are meeting with Ottawa County once a month to give them a review of what pretrial does. This is kind of new to them, what he will do in drug court. This is kind of new to them, what he will do in drug court. We're waiting for, we have pretrial clients. We do not have drug court clients yet from Ottawa County, but things just go a little slower there than they do in Celine County because of the population. And a lot of persons that we have on probation live in Celine County, grew up in Ottawa County, may have an Ottawa County charge, but live here, and so we don't have those cases coming directly to us that way. So we're going to continue to work on that, and we'll know that we'll build that capacity. UpTrust technology, we, I've already talked a little bit about it. We are just seeing the amazing responses and positivity with UpTrust, the platform. So we are extending that. CKF is joining, I believe, by the end of this month. CKF will be on the UpTrust platform, which will increase our communication and client notification of groups and other things coming on. We would love to get St. Francis on at some time, but this is, if they're listening, this is the first they've heard of it, so I don't want them to panic, but that would be another great fit for us. The Mental Health Center would be another great fit. It is HIPAA certified, but I know that provider agencies really need the extra assurance and the documentation. It took us almost a year to get CKF on because of HIPAA and those requirements, which I respect, and we should do that, so. But we're getting that, and the goal would be to build continued full community partnerships on UpTrust platform with us into the coming future. Telemed services were not needed and as impactful. We had them, and you all approved that contract, and it worked for a short time, but as COVID reduced and people opened up more there, remote and those kind of things, our telemed services were not as needed as they were in the beginning. So we did suspend that contract, didn't want to spend those dollars when we weren't utilizing it, but it's there to pick up at any time should that, should COVID do this again or whatever's going on. We talked about the bike program quite a while, and people call us all the time wanting to know if we can give them bikes, and we've had a very good bike program for many years, partnering with the PD, with Lost and Found and those kind of things. And that's suspended because they just weren't seeing as many, and a lot of them were not usable. So we wrote grants, we got those kind of things, and now we're reaching out to department stores, and Long MacArthur does something where they give to the community to see if we can partner with those department stores. We have not had a lot of response. Instead, Community Corrections has purchased those bikes at this point. They're relatively inexpensive, but I feel like that might be a community effort to try to pick up, so we'll continue to work on that. We're continuing to take the lead with a couple others in the law enforcement and Health Department to secure coresponders. I believe that's going to go over to the Mental Health Center now, and so the Health Department will be a partner, but not the host agency. We're working on coresponders, thanks to a share of some of the ARPA funds that were approved a few weeks ago. We're working hard to get the county administrator everything he needs to implement. We're meeting again the end of this week to finalize with Mental Health Center, Sheriff's Office, Police Department, Community Corrections. It's just kind of taking that lead and assisting in providing those services. We won't, services of writing everything that needs to be done, we will not be a part of that once it gets going. But again, it'll address the mentally ill clients. Hopefully, the goal would be, and I, I believe this, that we'll reduce mentally ill clients going to jail, because we're going to address them on the street. They won't be arrested, they won't be locked down, they'll go to a resource center during the day and work with mental health practitioners in the evening, and so we're working that out, and we have a lot of support within the community, but also within law enforcement, so I'm very excited that they want those services. Just something that I don't know who said I'm a short timer, I am. July of '22, after 35 years with Community Corrections, I'm going to retire from Community Corrections. It's been an experience I would never miss. Celine and Ottawa County officials and staff have been gracious and supportive and willing to expand as the needs of the client population expanded, increased in risk and need, and I can't say that enough. I never was really part of a commission in Ottawa or Celine that didn't support this client population. A lot of people don't care about the offender population. They think it's their problem, they should go to prison. Well, we know that's not going to work, and we also know that that just makes them more dangerous, and there's no beds for them. Prison's not taking people. So the fact that Celine and Ottawa County Commissioners saw and respected the need and saw them as community members within their community is gracious and amazing to me. Community partners grew, we enhanced services, supported effective change over the many years, and for that, I'm very grateful. Community Corrections grew from literally four persons when I started in 1987. You can count that back if you want to, but you don't need to. I'm old. To 22 approximately, and probably a few more. I've probably missed a few people up at 22, and then we might be closer to 25. But our, we, our agency grew, and we grew with the help of the community and the commissioners and support from the counties and grant writing, of course. We increased our grant writing. I didn't start writing grants, and somewhere along the way, I knew that we better learn how to write grants, so we did. And I'm very grateful for the dollars we've received and the growth of that agency. To live in the building we're in now and some of the places we used to be in is amazing. I, I want to say beautiful. It's beautiful compared to the dumps we've been in, and I hope that a landlord that I really care about doesn't care. And I'm just proud to be a part of an agency and a successful agency. Our outcomes are at 83% at the end of last fiscal year. To have a successful completion rate of 83% of a high-risk, high-need population of offenders is unheard of. You know, we were always in that 70%, lower 60s, but staff care, and staff do a great job, and so it's difficult work every day, and they keep showing up and surprising me every day. So I just wanted to say that under accomplishments, because I do consider that all accomplishments. Deferred sentencing, drug court is to begin in April. These are the plans that we're starting. It was a bit delayed from March because of just not having final input and things we needed from the court. Dave Irving will be the ISO supporting those clients, if it's in good, and it's, it'll give substance abuse addicted persons the ability to participate in a very structured reduced risk and a reduced substance abuse program without having a felony conviction at the end of it. So they're arrested, they're not charged, well, they can be charged, but they won't receive a sentence. It'll be a deferred sentence, and if they complete successfully drug court, then that felony conviction of a drug offense goes away. And tell, trust me when I tell you, if you've had a felony conviction, drugs, more than one, finding employment, finding living establishments, finding jobs can be very difficult. People don't want to hire addicted people. They're open more now because of COVID problems, but it's hard for them to find housing and, and simple things that we all take for granted. So to have that conviction deferred and moved and never show up on the record will be significant. Continue to see more UpTrust growth, the technology platform as we grow, and as I explained, we want to grow into our community, but also across the state. I've had Community Corrections Directors reach out, and we have two that are going to join for their counties and push it in their counties, so that's exciting to me. And then just continued secure funding and shared partnerships with Celine County and the City of Salina to support the coresponders and those services that I mentioned earlier. And then our budget update, currently the agency's in our final quarter for fiscal year, so there's not a lot going on. I looked at that, and at this point, in most line items, we are over the amount I would have expected to have there, and I think that's still related to some COVID things. But the good thing about that is we'll be able to move some of those dollars around and cover areas where salary benefits, maybe office, facility costs, those kind of things, we can move those into, to cover those costs before the end of the cycle for DOC. So that doesn't hurt us to be a little over in some areas. Substance abuse, those kind of things, UAs are the highest dollar usually, and I think that'll just continue to be that case. And again, any changes that go to the budget, don't change the bottom dollar, but they'll certainly need commission and advisory board review. That's it. Any questions?
Will you be up here to see us before you retire, so we can give you a proper goodbye? It sounded to me like you were, this was it.
Well, I don't think I will be here again. I, I'm not going to do anything publicly.
Okay.
So that's just, you know, me.
Okay.
But you'll all hear about something.
Okay.
Okay. Well, publicly, thank you for all your years of service, and it's been great working with you, Ben, and your knowledge base is going to be missed.
Thank you.
In this, thank you for your.
Thank you. Well, I'll see you at the advisory boards. Don't not show.
Oh, do you guys have those still?
We'll invite you back before you.
Oh, I'm going to run for every one of your offices.
All right.
I'd have to move too much. It's not worth it.
Well, 35 years is quite an accomplishment. You would have thought there would have been some child labor laws in effect.
Oh, so I wish, but thank you.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Public?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Item number two.
Emergency Management update with Michelle Barkley, Director.
Morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commission.
Good morning.
I have quite a ways till I hit 35 years. Just saying.
Just so we know.
Right. Can you pull up the PowerPoint for me? Thank you. So we will be going over our first quarter for emergency management. Next slide. I'm very excited to announce that after two years and nine days, the local disaster declaration for COVID did expire on April 5. On March 7, we did turn in our sheltering paperwork for public assistance. That was the county ran sheltering that we did between August 21 and February 20, for 2002, sorry, August of '21, February of '22. We did 32 individuals for a various amount of stay, whether it was one night to anywhere for 15 days. Next slide. We are looking to get about $14,000 back from that. There were some expenses that FEMA did deem that they would not reimburse. Over the entire disaster period, with both the state ran shelters and the county ran shelters, we did assist 765 individuals with a place to stay where they could not quarantine or isolate safely on their own. Next slide. Just a breakdown of all of the resources and assets that we got because of the disaster declaration that we had in place. We got five cases of thermometers, and when I say cases, that includes the 12 boxes of equipment that is inside those cases. 35 cases of Sharps containers, 14 cases of bandages for the vaccine clinic, six cases of cleaning wipes that was distributed to first responders to clean down their units, 16 one-gallon drums of hand sanitizer that was distributed to our USD 305, 306, and 307. I'm very excited to say that after the 12 pallets of hand sanitizer that we were delivered, the Expo Center no longer has any of that on hand. 15 emergency ventilators to the hospital, 13,000 test kits, one machine to run those tests for the jail, so they could get their resort, results quicker. 280 cases of PPE provided by the Kansas Division of Emergency Management, 55 cases of PPE provided by the North Central Healthcare Coalition, and then 330 cases of PPE provided by the Strategic National Stockpile. Next slide. Speaking of a different disaster, back in December of '15, we had, on the 15th, we had the windstorm. As you can see, we have done our request for public assistance. Eight applicants in Celine County have participated, the City of Salina, the City of New Cambria, 305, 306, 307, the airport, Kansas Wesleyan, and Celine County. At this time, we have held the applicant briefings, and now it is between the project manager and the applicant to continue the rest of their public assistance process with my office assisting where needed. At this point, I cannot say the dollar amount that Celine County is looking to get reimbursed like I could for sheltering. As us, Celine County, our applicants consist of emergency management, Roden Bridge, and the senior center. Next slide. So just a recap of how we get into the public assistance process. First, it must be identified, and the disaster must be declared, which is why it's, I thank you guys so much for your declarations, whether they be formal or verbally. Eligible applicants are your local governments and then your private nonprofit organizations, and then eligible categories of work must have been required as a result of the declared incident to include emergency protective measures or public building and access damage. So on the left, there is an outline of the entire process for public assistance. We have just hosted the kickoff meeting, so next we will be moving on to the formation of projects, and that'll just be between the project manager, like I said, and the applicant. Next slide. Next slide. So since COVID is over, we have many partners that are excited to continue to enhance their preparedness. As it stands right now, we have a waypoint exercise that will be between the UAV teams of the Police Department Sheriff's Office and Fire Department, the County GIS, and the City GIS, and the Appraisers Office that will be held at the end of the month, weather permitting. We've have two cybersecurity exercises coming up. We have a phishing exercise that will be with the LEPC in June, and we just concluded a week-long simulation of ransomware on a 911 system with the PSAP Center and IT from both the city and the county. We have, for the fall, planned a hazmat spill for a trained enrollment to also utilize the UAV team, and we will have an airfield crash with the Army and Air National Guard, the SOPD, KHP Airport Authority, Fire Department, and Hospital. This stems from the exercise that we hosted last October out at the Crisis City. It was well-received by the Army and Air National Guard, and they would like to continue to enhance that relationship between the city, county, and themselves. Next slide. So just a quick weather recap. On the left, you can see the drought monitor from 2019. On the right, you have the drought monitor for 2022. We are in a severe drought. We have not gotten enough precipitation to dig us out of that hole. I do know in the last couple months, we have gotten some significant amount of snow. However, when that ends up melting, it does not equate to much moisture enough to dig us out of this hole. I do anticipate, after speaking with the National Weather Service, that throughout the summer, we will have issues with critical fire danger, and unfortunately, that's just not something that's going to go away. Next slide. We did host Storm Fury on the plains with the National Weather Service. We had a decent outcome for it being the first time hosted after COVID. We had 60 individuals show up. They were taught on the different types of storms, storm features that can help a person recognize the storm's potential severity, and how to report hazardous weather and severe weather safety. Fingers crossed that I don't need to utilize those individuals that participated in that training this evening, but I just do ask that we remain weather-aware as we are on the hook for severe weather tonight. Next slide. Next slide. Just a recap of rural fire statistics. As you can see, we have had an increase in injury accidents over the last three months, and we always remain high on medical emergencies. Fire alarms and commercial fires for both residential and commercial areas out in the county do remain significant. We've had a lot of vehicle fires and grass fires under the other fire category, and that has remained consistent over the past three months, but thankfully, no technical rescues, but as we move into harvest, that's always something that we're concerned about. Next slide. This is just a recap over Celine County burning. We had 1,808 recorded controlled burns for 2021. We did just recently implement a constant contact list for notification for those that burn within Celine County on update of burn conditions. That has been well-received by many members of the prescribed burning community as well as rural fire. And the Prescribed Burn Association will be hosting their first meeting on May 4 at the 4H Building. They are very excited to get that ball rolling again. I know it's been some time since we have had that here in Celine County. Next slide. That is all I have. Is there any questions?
Good update. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to item number three.
Jail update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
You're on again, Philip.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the latest in our series of monthly updates from the jail. Our construction team is preparing an update packet for you each month, and so we have just a few pictures and a high-level overview of what has been going on and what they anticipate coming up. And so I could go into any questions about that, but I thought I would highlight a few other things that are not covered in the packet that are going on currently. So we continue to work on easement language with both the City of Salina for the stormwater easement and with Evergi for the perimeter easement for their high-power lines. Think we are making progress with both of those entities. It has been pretty slow-going. The sheriff and I have met with the architects and a couple of furniture vendors to start talking about the process of actually furnishing the building once it is completed. It seems like that is a little bit premature to start talking about furnishing a building that you see as just a hole in the ground right at the moment, but given the lead times and the supply chain issues that are out there in the world right now, we don't have much time to wait on furniture, so we are moving on that. Speaking of things underground, the fiber, the commission awarded a contract for fiber between this building and the new jail, and we have received word of who next tech's project manager is going to be on that, so we've got them in contact with the construction managers out at the jail site. Very happy to have that moving along. The State Department of Health and Environment requires a site utilities permit for the things you see there on the photograph, and so that has been filed, and KDHE did have a minor correction that they needed us to make, and that has been resubmitted to them. We're just waiting to hear final outcome. And then we've also looked at a design for the monument sign that will go out along Pacific Avenue to notify people what this big building is a little bit south of the street. So excited that many different aspects of the building are going along. So you can see in this picture some of the underground utilities that are being installed on-site. You want to go on, Phil, to the next one there? So this is sort of at the perimeter of one of the housing units where the cells will be installed. Go on down. And you can see a lot of the conduits being laid. And preparation for some of the flooring being poured, the concrete. More rock, a lot of rock under this building. Might be the last one. So that is the, that is the update for now. We do, bless you, we did have, the sheriff did go back up to South Dakota again to look at the mezzanine level cells up there, and we already have 22 cell blocks that have been cast in place up in South Dakota, so they are on track to start getting those delivered in late May, which, believe it or not, is next month. I can't believe how fast time's flying. And with that, I'll be happy to answer questions from Commissioners.
Phil, I noticed when I drove by the last couple of days that there is a pretty good-sized retention pond on the northeast corner, or it looks like that's what it's going to be. I don't remember that being in the plans, or wasn't, I've just missed it, or is that what that's going to be?
That is what that's going to be, and that's, that's that easement I talked about with the city. So the city is requiring storm drainage, as they do EA, pond in the sense that it will retain water permanently, but it's going to be sort of a large swale there, kind of a depression.
It seems kind of funny that they're requiring that for that area, simply because there's one not more than about 200 yards onto the east, or two, and then another one right after that. I mean, that'd cover all the water in the whole north end of town, I think, so it just, and I noticed also that it's really close to our main entrance, our main drive.
Yes, so it will be just to the east of the main drive will be where that's located. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions with the commission? Comments from the public? Thank you, Phil. Go on down.
During the consent calendar, so I looked back through the, the grant award to Salina Area Technical College. The county's funds will not be paying for tuition. They are paying for equipment for the truck driving training, but it should be tuition-free to the participants because in their grant submissions, Salina Area Technical College says they can access Kansas Promise Act funds for the tuition, and that's why they did not request tuition from us. So I just wanted to clarify that. So we have another ARPA-funded project to talk about. This one is exciting. This is Choose Saline County. So if Commissioners will recall, we previously discussed an app that we can use to channel funds to local businesses. So the idea here is that folks download this app on their phone, enroll in the program. They earn what we are calling Saline Stars at local businesses, and then they can redeem those at other participating local businesses, and, and then those businesses will be reimbursed for those things through our ARPA funding. So the name of that app, we went back and forth with a few different things, but we've officially settled on Choose Saline County as the name of that app. And so if you go on to the next slide, Phil, this was in this month's Salina Area Chamber of Commerce newsletter that talks about recruiting businesses to be a part of the Choose Saline County app, the account tonight and tomorrow, and help the chamber go out and get businesses signed up. We have a number of folks who've already signed the business agreement. And then the third slide, if you go on to that, Phil, I wanted to point out on our county website, if folks go to saline.org/ARPA, R-A-R-P-A, right there on the right-hand side, you'll see the Choose Saline County icon, and there is a place that you can sign up and be notified, be emailed when the app is ready for download on the App Store and the Google Play Store. We anticipate that that is going to happen this week, so we are very excited to finally get this going and, and get money out to the businesses in the community. So that is the good news. The bad news that I wanted to, or didn't want to, but I need to bring to the commission's attention, is the fact that last night, entities around the community were notified of the results of the applications to the state's ARPA funding for their base or building a stronger economy grants through the Kansas Department of Commerce. And the commission may recall that we submitted one application through Saline County for housing for the universities. That grant was not successful. I've been in contact with both the City of Salina and Salina Community Economic Development Organization. City of Salina submitted three applications, Skeeto submitted one as well. Apparently, none of the applications in this community were successful. So we remain hopeful. We have a number of meetings set up with folks at the state to talk about how we do kick free some money for housing in this community, but it is apparently not through that base grant process. And the last thing that I wanted to chat with Commissioner about this morning is the Kansas Association of Counties has sent us a ballot that they need to be completed. They have another association that has applied for membership as an affiliate member with KAC, that is the Kansas County Human Resource Association. They tried to vote on this electronically earlier in the year. I think we submitted a vote once already, but they did not receive the required number of votes, so the vote failed. So now they're trying again with a paper copy. So unless there are any objections from the Commissioners, I'm just going to give that to our KAC representative for him to complete, that is Commission Chair Wies at this point. So that was all I had this morning, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
In regards to the KAC human resources thing, I served on that board for a couple of years, and I can't tell you how many times it came up that we had a HR question, and it was at my insistence that they try to secure that agency to, to get on board, and I talked that over with Marilyn too at the time, and I think it'd be wise for our county to approve that and vote for it, because it's a number of times that they have questions that doesn't, that don't get answered, or you have to put it off a couple of months to act on it or whatever, so.
We'll move on to item number five.
Commissioners' comments.
I'd like to say that the end of last week was pretty busy for me as far as the county goes. On Wednesday, I attended the North Central Kansas Highway Meeting out in Ellsworth, and a number of projects, DOT was present, and outlined quite a few projects that were going to be going on throughout the year. And amazingly, the City of Salina and Saline County are a good part of that money that's being spent there. So that was worthwhile. I think our county engineer and the head of our county department for the road and bridge was there, along with our deputy administrator, so we all took that in. Thursday morning, I attended the special meeting for the airport that there was really nothing that came of it, except that a couple of days later, it was announced that it's been put off on the assignment of, of a new airline. They, the, I can't, the Department of Transportation has said that they are going to extend the deadline to make application to June 11th, I think it is. Is that, is that correct? It was, or is that May?
May 11th, it was from April.
May 11th. May 11th was in my mind. So it does have some promising aspects to it as to the, the service that we're going to get in Salina, that we're hopeful that it's going to continue to be jet service, both Chicago and Denver, and with the same size of jet service that we're now getting. So they're, they're pretty confident that that's going to happen, even though there were only a couple of airlines that were even showed any interest at all. So hopefully, that'll happen. Following that same morning, I attended the ribbon cutting for OCCK. I know I saw a couple of other Commissioners, so I don't want to steal their thunder if they were going to mention that, but, and then, of course, the chamber dinner on Friday night was well-attended by the community. I think there were close to 900 people there, something like that. So that was a lot of fun also. So that's the end of my speech.
Anyone else? To build on what Commissioner Vidriksen said, I too attended the ribbon cutting at OCCK, their new facility there, and, and the governor was there and spoke about transportation dollars that were going to be spent statewide. I might have the numbers wrong, I think it was like 17 million. But of that, 13 million?
That's, I'm guessing, somewhere in there, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, and, and of that, our own OCCK is receiving 1.3 of that. So that's quite a windfall to them to, to help build and bolster what, what they're already doing. Anyone else?
I will just mention, and because I've seen you both there, and I attended that same ribbon cutting, but it's what really impressed me is that where they talked about, they have served over 4 million rides since that has started, you know, and of course, it's been almost 20 years. And, and to see how it's grown from just that first building to this new addition is just amazing, and I, I was, happened to be on the board at OCCK at the time when they did take over the old Long MacArthur Ford Building, and that this whole program started, so Patrick Wallerius and Sheila, they've just done a heck of a job getting that going and providing the services they do in a multi-county area. It's, I, my kudos to those guys. Yes.
Very good. We'll move to item number six.
Announcements.
Anyone have any announcements they'd like to share? Seeing that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We've moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry.